Okay, um, Tim, you still gonna make the motion? Okay. I would like to call the Fairfield County Council Regular Meeting to Order, Wentzboro, South Carolina, Monday, October 10th, 2022, 6 o'clock PM. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda? It's been second, it's been moved in second, any discussion?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm about to make the motion to amend the agenda to add item F under Orchesters, Resolutions and Orders, first reading by Tyler Holmes, Orchesters number 83, Orchesters to be issued a request to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Orders, number 599, and related zoning act, provide for zoning reclassification from RC, rural community district, to be to general business district, for 4.44 entered parcel TNS number 077000023, that's 000, owned by Buckeye County.
Can we get a second? It's been moved in second, all in favor, aye? Aye. Any other discussion?
Yes, I, I want to make a motion that we, um, go into executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice relating to pending claims regarding a county bridge.
Second, it's been moved in second. Um, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, you hear two amendments, now can we get a motion to approve the agenda with, with both amendments?
So move.
It's been moved in second, that we approve the agenda with both amendments, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposees, nay? Let the record show that the, um, the agenda is approved with two amendments to the agenda. Um, now we have invocation by Councilmember Paulie.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for everyone that's here tonight, and that they will return home safely. Let every decision that we make be in the best interest of Fairfield County, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Item four, approval of the minutes, can we get a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposees, nay? Let the record show six zero approval of the minutes. We're down, we're now down to item five, Public Presentation for Fire Prevention Week, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. This proclamation recognizes October 9th through the 15th of 2022 as National Fire Prevention Week. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the county of Fairfield is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Fairfield County. Fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, with home fires responsible for the death of more than 2,580 people in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association. Fire departments in the United States responded to over 356,500 home fires. Smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Fairfield County residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sound, sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond. Residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Fairfield County residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. Fairfield County emergency responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Fairfield County residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. The 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us how important it is to have a fire, a home fire escape plan. Therefore, be it resolved that we Fairfield County Council do hereby proclaim October 9th through the 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this county, and urge all the people of Fairfield County to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Fairfield County Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2022.
Um, thank you. I see we have, um, Chief, um, um, Mr. Pope, um, Deputy Chief, um, Mr. Webb, um, if you want to come up, we can go ahead and present you this proclamation, both of you. Um, just so I mentioned, um, there's a team, um, into the schools, um, this week, um, they went to some of the schools in Wentzboro this week, um, doing, um, fire education. My wife is also a part of that team, so let me throw that in. But again, Tom, well, all, all the education going into all the schools, and another thing, if anyone, or if you know of anyone that needs smoke alarms or carbon monoxide detectors, please let, you can let Jason know, um, Mr. Webb know, and so that we can get smoke alarms in all the homes in Fairfield County. Um, this is very important, and those smoke, uh, smoke alarm, smoke detectors, um, are free, and we put them in free. Now we're down to item six, First Public Comments Section, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. Fairfield County Government welcomes public input during appropriate times at county council meetings. Such input will be allowed in the time, place, and manner determined by the Chair of the County Council as the Presiding Officer. Persons wishing to speak must conduct themselves in the following manner: sign up at the appropriate time to speak; should refrain from engaging in conduct or speech that seeks to disrupt or disturb the meeting; must respect the time limit for the public comments; and must refrain from personal attacks or personal statements about any individual or individuals. Such statements are disruptive because this part of our meeting is not conducive for such exchanges between individuals. As stated, speakers are expected to express themselves within the time, place, and manner previously described. Any violation will result in a warning from the Chair of County Council or the Presiding Officer. Any failure to heed the warning of the Chair or Presiding Officer will result in the violating speaker forfeiting their opportunity to finish speaking or to speak during the remainder of the meeting. Council welcomes the comments from members of the public and asks for the cooperation of everyone to allow for the orderly conduct of the people's business. One person signed up to speak, Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway. The reelection, hey, Mary, certain problems arrived in the past 27 months. Those problems began by not listening to people. Let me just review efforts that we've made as citizens, and that you've made to repeat your citizens for the past 19 months taking care of our employees. Through two budgets and other sessions, despite pleadings from some council members, despite pleadings from a lot of citizens, we need to take care of our employees. How many, how many dozens have we lost, and what percentage of employees have we lost since then? Far, far too many. Also, through those dozens of citizens, citizens know we've got the money, yet time and time again, we've heard you say, "We don't have the money, we don't have the money to take care of our citizens, we don't have the money to take care of our fire, our police equipment, our EMS teams, we don't have the money." Two budgets, and then all of a sudden, prior to the election, we found the money, well, we knew it was there all the time, and there's still more money, we found the money, we're going to finally take care of our employees. But again, we're only going halfway to our employees. Money isn't everything, and in fact, most surveys will show that people don't plead just for money. Many times, money is not the main reason, the advantage. People leave the job because of the boss, the bosses, not because just the pay. The other aspect of this is the fact that we haven't even made any progress despite pleadings. We've done a survey to address the other end of ends, what can keep employees in place, productive, and happy. Turnover is the most costly thing of any organization, and we've paid the dear price in humanity, in dollars, and service for the leaders. So finally get this going, but the key message of all this, we failed to heed the citizens, we, we cut off comments on YouTube, we cut off second speaking sessions, and we're paying the price right now, straggling at the end in a pre-election mood. Shame on you if you don't stop listening to the citizens. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
We're down to item seven, Public Hearing, and Ordinances to Appropriate Funds Received by the Fairfield County from the State of South Carolina pursuant to the rule, County Stabilization Fund established by proviso 113.9 of the State General Appropriation Act H 5151. Do we have anyone to sign up? It is now 6:13 for the public hearing.
Yes, sir, one person signed up to speak, Mr. Chair, Randy Bright.
Can you hear me now? I normally project pretty well, so, but thanks for the tip. Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1. The first speaker made a great segue into my comments on the public hearing. We've mentioned before that ordinances and public hearing posts that don't give any details, don't help us judge them, don't help us help you, and don't help anybody but maybe people on the inside. And I, and I bring to your attention, there's no what, where, when, or why, how these funds are going to be appropriated. And remember, appropriate means you're taking from the taxpayers, so we have a vested interest, whether it's state or county taxes. When you're appropriating money from the taxpayers, they deserve to know where it's going and why. And not only that, using that same word appropriate, is it going to an appropriate place? But how would you know by reading this? How would you know? Oh, well, you might know, it might be in your packets, but the people that are, where the money is appropriated from, we don't know. We have no idea what it's going to, we have no idea why, we have no idea how the money's going to be tracked. How is it going to be, uh, how are we going to ensure that the money is put to the most productive use and it's being tracked so that, uh, we don't have waste, fraud, and pouring money down the drain? We've got to have these details. Listen to the people, please. The people can help you. You can't do this alone, and you shouldn't do it alone. And it's really immoral and unethical for you to do it alone without citizen-informed input. Keep the citizens informed, and everybody wins in this county, but this is just another example. Maybe you'll give us details, but when will we get written details? Maybe you'll post it on your Facebook page, you don't post the meetings on Facebook page anymore. When will this happen? When are you going to listen to the people? But again, tell us what you're going to do with this, and why, and how it's going to be tracked, and, and what benefit is it, and what alternatives have you thought out? Yes, I know there's guidelines, uh, that go with this, but still, it's your final decision within those guidelines, and it should be, that decision should be done in harmony with the citizens. Get citizens buy-in, and this county will go much further, instead of not making any progress except for what the previous administration did for the last two years. Thank you for listening.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
So we close the, um, the public hearing at 6:17. Ordinances, Resolutions, and Orders, item eight, Second Reading. Second, uh, Second Reading, Ordinance Number 799, ordering to appropriate general fund revenues for the hiring of three new officers for the Fairfield County Detention Center, and to increase the bonus for the newly certified detention center officers and sheriff deputies to $1,500. Can we get a motion? Okay. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposees, nay? B, Second Reading, Ordinance Number 800, and Orders to Appropriate General Fund Revenues in the amount of $486,535.79 to provide cost of living increases between 2% increases, between 2% and 4% to the base salaries for all... Uh, let's, let's go back a minute, um, no, we, we good. Between the, between 2% and 4% to the base salaries for all county employees, and to increase the operating budget of the Sheriff's Department by $100,000 for the purpose of additional salary adjustments within the department, and $20,000 to provide incentive bonus to volunteer firefighters who meet the requirements of the volunteer incentive program administered by the Office of the State Fire Marshal.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? Yes, um, Mr. Um, before, before you, let, I want Mr. Whitaker to explain, you want to go through and explain, um, what we're doing here, what that is?
I can just add that, um, you know, we had budgeted to use 1.4 million from fund balance to cover this year's budget.
Of last year's budget?
Last year's budget.
Yes.
But because of the, the disciplined way that we went about doing this work, um, right now, we have a budgeted, um, under fund balance of 239,000. So basically, we have not, uh, used any fund balance, it's under fund balance. It's under fund balance of 200 currently in our budget. So just want to make sure folks are aware of that. Right now, things are looking very good because of the kind of the way that we went about doing. And also, I want to add that we're not, we're going to even get better at that when I have the discussion about service plans and how that works with budgeting. So we're going to know exactly what we're purchasing, the services that we're purchasing in preparation for the budget, the budgeted expenses and revenues. So I'm really excited about the conversation we're going to have about that.
Okay, Mr. Paul.
So on the part that states $20,000 to provide incentive bonuses to volunteer firefighters who meet the requirements of the volunteer incentive program, can you go in detail how is that applied to volunteers? Is that actual cash payment, or is that some kind of other incentive that they receive?
Okay. What the state does is provide a tax incentive. In other words, you won't pay as much taxes because of that. Our program is to allow people who answer fire calls, who go to the fire calls themselves based on their fire station, to receive an additional money so that we can have people respond to fire calls. So that's why that incentive is in there. It's really an incentive to act.
Okay. So other volunteers, depending on how much they respond, might not get anything?
If they don't receive the incentive from the state, they do not receive the incentive from the county.
Okay.
Um, one of the other things I do want to say is people keep saying that, "Where did the revenue come from?" So let me tell you. It was a disciplined, um, physical responsibility so that you begin to look at it. I'm going to read to you, when we had the, when we had the, um, finance meeting, this meeting was 7:25. And one of the things Ms. Bass said, she said the total revenues to the date were $32,104,000 compared to a budget $32,343. That without any budgeted use of the fund balance. So at June 30th, when we had passed the budget, um, we were trying to look at it. And so we talked to our finance staff, um, the county administrator. How can we do something in these inflationary times to add a raise to them? So we began to look at all of this stuff, and we began to research, do analysis, and not only, there's another thing we did that's probably different. Not only did we look at it for this year, we can pay it for next year. Okay? So then, the money came from a disciplined approach to finance that is somewhat different than what has been done in the past. And let me remind you, when we talk about numbers and when we talk about finance, let me tell you, we done the right thing. Now, should we have said, "Because it's election year, that we won't give a raise"? Nobody would say that. Should we take the heat for doing right? You all should celebrate this, that we did the right thing. When we found out that we could do it, Ms. Bass, team, Mr. Whitaker team, we all looked at it and says, "Okay, we had allocated 1.4 coming from fund balance. That 1.4 coming from fund balance, we didn't use it. It was already allocated. So what we did is, how can we do this, and it's sustainable? And that's what this raise is all about." If no other discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Let the record show, six zero. Second reading, ordinance number 801, an ordinance to prohibit with support of the state traffic engineer large trucks from traveling on Patrick Road S 20-44 from U S 321 to South Carolina It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay?
Nay.
Let the record show, five one. Second reading, ordinance number 802, an ordinance to appropriate general fund revenues in the amount of $363,000 to provide supplemental funding for the River Road Fire Station project.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Let the record show, six zero. Third and final reading, ordinance number 798, an ordinance to appropriate funds received by the Fairfield County from the state of South Carolina pursuant to the rural county stabilization fund established by proviso 113.9 of the State General Appropriation Act H 5151.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Whitaker, do you want to talk about what's in that?
So I'm going to do this slowly one more time, okay? For this, for this pot of money. Due to the recent census shifting of population into the, and into and throughout the state, the General Assembly put 12 million into a rural county stabilization fund. Under this proviso, any county that has a population growth as determined by the 2020 census of less than 5.35% since the 2010 census shall be eligible to receive monies from the fund. For fiscal year 2022, 2023, Fairfield County will receive...
Excuse me, um, Mr. Bright, you on, I just want to make sure you're listening. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Fairfield County will receive $357,477. And my recommendation was, I recommend the uses of this funding as follows. Land development study at $100,000. The county zoning ordinance must be revised and updated as part of a county's comprehensive plan update. Due to increased interest in the new development in Fairfield County, needed updates to the county road development and land disturbance standards will be included in this land development study. So that's $100,000 for that. County engineer at $120,000, including pay and benefits. The county engineer will perform professional civil engineering work in the design, development, review, and/or coordination of county road paving and maintenance projects, manage the state C grant funds, federal entitlement funds for transportation projects, and assist with other county capital improvement projects as necessary. Currently, this work is handled through a contract with an outside consulting firm. Bringing the position in-house reduces costs. The county engineer will report directly to the county administrator and will work closely with the director of public works on road projects. Gateway signage design at $50,000. Solicit proposals for a landscape architect or engineer to design gateway signage at the Fairfield County border on I 77. The design will include a cost estimate for the construction and installation of the gateway sign. Housing study at $40,000. Solicit proposals for a study of housing opportunities in Fairfield County. The study will incorporate items in the comprehensive plan related to anticipated growth and development along with the plans for the new wastewater treatment plant. The result of the study will include recommendations on where to guide residential growth within Fairfield County in a manner that allows the county to support residential development while also preventing, also preserving the county's rural character. And lastly, a class and compensation study at $20,000. The class and compensation study goes along with the administrator's current efforts to update the county's human resource policies and procedures. The study will review internal equity and pay relationships between positions and compare the county's pay schedule with similar organizations. The study will help the county with employee recruitment, retention, and containing labor costs. This is our recommendation.
Any other discussion? Mr. Paul.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir.
And I might have missed it, and I could probably add it up later, but do you have the total amount that we receiving?
The total amount that we receive or how much we spending?
How much we receiving altogether?
$351,477.
A question I have is, and you mentioned the wastewater treatment plant, have we identified and acquired any property on the Broad River for the wastewater treatment plant? Are we looking at any?
No, sir.
Okay.
Were you talking about the wastewater treatment plant?
No, we just talked about in the context of the housing study.
Okay.
Okay.
The housing study. The results of the study will...
The results of the study will include where to guide residential development and incorporate items in the comprehensive plan. So it's just in conjunction with all the other work that's going on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Let the record show, six zero. Board and commission minutes for information only to behavior health service and the Aaron Otis Commission. Oh. Okay, item F, I'm sorry. Item F.
Chairman Bill, I make a motion to defer item F to the next council meeting, giving council members time to review their request.
It's been moved in second, that we defer item F to the next council meeting. Any, any, um, any other discussion since there's a deferment? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Let the record show, seven zero to defer. Six zero to defer. Now, thank you. Item nine, board and commission minutes, behavior health services, Aaron Otis Commission for information only. Board and commission, commission appointments none, old business none, new business none. County administrator report, visitor center, I mean, Mr. Whitaker.
Thank you, sir. Can you pull up, Gene Stevens is not feeling well. He was supposed to come and update us on the visitor center, so we're going to strike that from my report. But I want to do this PowerPoint, this PowerPoint they provided me with, uh, I guess I need to turn the power on. He's going to start it. I wanted to talk about some of the work that I think ties in well to what we're talking about in this notion of county service plans, county service plans, and specifically county service descriptions. Okay. So the South Carolina Association of Counties provides tools that help county governments govern more effectively. And one tool that I'm really a fan of and that we're using pretty closely is a handbook for county government in South Carolina. And in that, in that handbook, there's about 15 chapters that goes from the history of county government down to planning and zoning development. And it's a great resource for both appointed and elected officials. On page 54 of that, and I think I can turn the page, and I, can I turn the page and go to the next page? On page 54, there's a topic called linkage of budgets and service plans. And so we began to really explore this notion of service planning and what service plans mean to county government. And a service plan by definition is an outline of the services that an entity provides to a consumer or client, and in the case of county government, it is the county services provided to county citizens. And this is really lining up with the work we're doing around budgets, but also what we're going to put on our website. And I wanted to go to the next slide. I wanted to read directly from the text from the handbook. I can't do it. Oh, there we go. All right. So it's, so the quote, the, um, the quote, the handbook says, "Although not specifically required in state law, the ideal budget process involves the parallel development of service plans to be provided along with the budget to fund those services. Through such a planning process, the council and the citizens develop a clear understanding of what the budget will buy in terms of services." Right? So this is a great opportunity. And I know I've been trying to figure out other counties that do this. I don't know a lot about what other counties are doing to do service plans. We've talked to the South Carolina Association of Counties. Fairfield County is going to develop service plans. So the other slides just really talk about, under uniform guidelines issued by the council and by the chief executive, staff develop budget proposals and service plans for the next year. So what you will have next year is, along with the budget proposal, service plans of how much each service we're planning to provide to the citizens. What are the services? And then how much of the services based on looking at trends over time? And we're going to talk about three departments, services, and then thinking about them in terms of service plans. And further, it says, "The chief executive reviews department budgets and service plan proposals and then develop communications for the legislative body." So you'll be presented with budgets, but you'll also be presented with these service plans. And it really just, really just tells the citizens and the county what services are provided. And one of the things that we really don't do a good job is describing all the work that goes on in this department. So we're working very closely with our department head to really get credit and educate the citizens on what services does each apartment provide? How much are we budgeting? So I want to just use three examples. And since it's fire prevention, we wanted to use the fire service as an example, and you can go to the next slide. In fact, you can, I can do it, okay? Okay, there we go. There we go. All right. So I worked closely with Mr. Pope to come up, first of all, you can see that right now, our fire service operates on a budget of $1,076,818, and I can't really see clearly, but that's our current budget for our fire service department. And these are the things, these are the services that the citizens of Fairfield County get with that budget. They get fire suppression. So one of the things we want to do over the next year is determine, over the last five years, how many house fires, how many car fires? We should be able to present that data to you. So you should know how much of fire suppression services the county's getting for what is, for what is budgeted. Responding to all hazards within unincorporated area Fairfield County to include vehicle accidents, downed trees, power lines, roadways, emergency medical calls, all that work needs to be quantified so the county can be aware of what you're getting for your $1 million. Administering and enforcing the fire code, conducting training and public education on fire prevention. One of the things we would look to see is if our fire prevention work is reducing the amounts of fires that we are having, right? So you'll know exactly what you're paying for in the fire service, how much the citizens are getting of these services and how much they're paying for. Another one that I wanted to highlight was, of course, the finance department. There's a lot of work that goes on in the finance department, and we want to be able to identify and quantify all of that work. Everything from the accounting reports, the revenue administration, the treasury management in terms of making sure that our investments get returned, that we get a return on the investment, debt management, and it's just a lot there that happens behind the scenes in the finance department, and we want to be able to quantify and tell the citizens this is what, you know, the staff and citizens and county councils getting from a finance department. Then another example, a maintenance department, a building maintenance services, you know, how many buildings are they managing and maintaining? All the HVAC janitorial work that's going on. So we're working with our staff to not only develop descriptions of the services, accurate description of the work, as a management tool, but as a... description of the work as a management tool, but as a tool to communicate to citizens, but also a budgeting tool. And what you will have is not only these service descriptions, but you will have plans that show, last year we did this much of this, and this is how much we budgeted for in this work. So we're really excited about that. That is gonna be a part of our budgeting process. We are using that guidance from the South Carolina Association of Counties to really guide how we do work. A lot of times, people think just more, 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 or less, less, less. But now we'll be able to have some data to quantify. Why do we need more? Why do we need less? This is how much service we can provide for this amount of money. This is what we've done over the last few years. So really working good with the staff. Everybody's working diligently to kind of understand the services, right? This is not a strategic plan, but just a service plan. What do you do? And how much are you paying to do it? How much does it cost for you to do it? So that's some of the work that we're doing, and I just wanted to update the council on that work. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Again, I want to thank you for this work. One of the things, the Association of Counties, most of us go to this Association of Counties convention, and one of the things, we get a book every year, every two years, it's called the Wage and Salary Studies. And in that book, Fairfield County is an outlier. Mr. Paul, I think about three or four months, he also mentioned the book because for the size of our county, we're just way too large in a lot of things. So we need to go ahead and look at this and see how we stack up so we can see what we need to be doing and how we need to go forward. This would be a good piece of work, and so we need to come to it, and so I'm glad you're Okay, clerk to council report. County council time. Mr. Whitaker.
In my last meeting, at the last meeting, I requested information on the Ridgeway project, and I asked for it the next day. To this day, I have not received anything on there. And about a month ago, I asked about the employee survey and was told that it was complete, and we haven't heard anything about that, and we need to know the results of the survey. When can we expect it?
Mr. Whitaker?
County attorney on that. And the information on the Ridgeway information, I don't know what is the specific one, but I will say that, you know, you have my email, and you can come in and talk to us at any time about anything that you need.
I asked about who the bidders was, who the bidders were, and we also like to see some plans on, we haven't, I don't think any of us seen the plans on that, and...
We actually could just schedule a meeting to share that with you. It's on the procurement website, but we can brief you on that.
Okay.
Anybody else? Mr. Paul.
I recently was in, well, first of all, I want to say thank you for everyone that's here tonight. It's great to look out and see a larger crowd here tonight, so thank everybody for being here. I recently was invited and attended a meeting in the Mitford community.
Mr. Paul.
Is that my name? Can you hear me now?
Okay.
I recently was invited and attended a meeting in the Mitford community. This meeting was to inform the citizens in that area about several major concerns they had concerning EMS, fire, sheriff, and other issues in the county. This group had to pay fifty dollars an hour for the rental of the building. They were advised later that they had to pay another fifty because they went over the allotted time slot. This was not a wedding, it was not a birthday party, or any other special event. This was to be informed and made aware of issues in their community. Citizens pay enough taxes on these buildings and should not have to pay to be informed by their council member of what's going on in their community. County buildings have been used recently by council members to hold town halls to inform citizens in that community what is going on, and council members did not pay. So what is the difference? Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker, please, please look at that and see whether all rules and stuff was followed, because what we do want is everyone to be treated the same. Okay? And so I don't know, I don't know anything about the meeting, so just, just look at that. Okay?
I'd also like to comment. I'd like to thank the citizens of District Two and the Mitford area for inviting us to really talk a lot about EMS, about fire, about police. And I, I thought that one thing that came out, you know, while it was in sometimes a contentious meeting, I think that one of the important things that came out was certainly about an auxiliary EMS kind of program. And when we come together as citizens, I think it's very important that we try to find ways to work together. And that seems as if it can be a result of taking a look at those people who may have be, may be retired, EMS workers, and others who might fill in at some particular point in time in areas where another EMS crew is out on a call. So I think it's one of the things that we probably can take a look at, can explore, and see how we might be able to institute it so that we make sure that our response time to calls is decreased.
Thank you. Anyone else? One of the things I would like to say is, is that I want to thank everyone for always attending the meetings. And as we talk about first responders, public safety, that's, that's really where my heart is. I've been a volunteer firefighter since I was twenty-one years old, and I'm now sixty-eight. I be telling them all the time, I says, man, I'm getting too old for this, but I still enjoy the work and feel like I'm doing some good. But one of the things I do want to mention is, is the work this council is doing around first responders. And so everyone can know, because you hear a lot of stuff, and you wonder where people get it from. Last year with the AWPer money, the first responders got four thousand dollars. We requested a grant through the state office for forty thousand dollars for APACs, for our fire service. Mr. Pope is out there. Some of them is about fifteen years out of date. Four hundred thousand, I'm sorry, four hundred thousand dollars for APACs. We bought a fire truck, ambulance, two chef cars. We just provided a four and a three percent raise, although we provided a two percent raise, but all the first responders will fit in the forty-three percent. We give the chef, with his raise, we give him an additional one hundred thousand dollars for additional raises so that he can, as he says, stop the bleeding. And then we provided twenty thousand dollars for incentives for volunteer firefighters. This is significant, especially when we do research all across the state and across the nation to see how many public safety people is vacant in jobs. We have in the nation more public safety people, more public safety vacancies than ever in the history of this nation. That's a fact, and you can go look anywhere you want to. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to work to make sure we get to a place that we need to be, but this council is, is working really hard, trying to, trying to make sure we do that. Another thing is, we keep hearing that people are saying, and I got a paper here, people keep saying that the wastewater treatment plant on the Broad River gonna cost seventy-five million dollars. Where that come from? I don't know, because that's not the case. The plant will cost eighteen point five million, as the preliminary estimate was just given to us really today. It was twenty million, but because the line is gonna be shorter, it's gonna be eighteen point five million. It is still believed that we can build the wastewater treatment plant for the amount of money that was given to us by Dominion Energy. So we're working to make sure we get these things done. The wastewater treatment plant will allow Fairfield County to grow and prosper, and all of us, all the citizens, need to be on board with us trying to make sure this happens. This is so important to this county that really is probably the most important thing because we don't have the infrastructure in place today. And until we get it, we will not grow. We're working hard trying to make sure that gets done, but when people start saying stuff that they don't have facts to back up, it's, it puts forth a terrible image, and people begin to call and ask you questions, and you don't know where these questions come from. So this is where we are. And I am asking, Mr. Bright said, want citizens input. I'm asking the citizens to help us to, to inform the public that we are trying to get this wastewater treatment system in to help this county grow and prosper. This has been a long journey. If he can remember right, we tried a, it was tried to get a one cent sales tax. It failed. We were able to get with the Dominion settlement negotiation this money. This means a lot to this county. And so let's move forward, and those are the numbers. Thank you. Can we get a motion to go into executive session for?
For move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to go into executive session to... To, to receive legal advice relating to a pending claim regarding a county bridge. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Let the record show. Six, zero in executive session. At six fifty-three.
You gotta have it be twenty-four hours for the voting. Yeah, we trying to meet with them now to get the staff. You doing all right?
I'm good, I'm good. Was that information good?
Yeah, yeah, it's good. Yeah, I might need, I emailed, I might need you to get a copy of another county.
Okay.
So I can compare the two.
Okay.
But I'll email if I need it.
No problem.
I'm glad.
They're gonna do it right now.